No pressure, no pressure.
Tommy's not coming. Hey, I'm here. Where's Mark McLeaney on here?
Five A.
It is five A, okay.
Chief C, it was hot. It was hotter than somewhere near it.
Was that funny? Was that good? He threw me under the bus.
It's broken. Joe told me it was broken.
We don't believe it. Do you just know it? Hey. See, it's got the numbers, that's all.
Well, you were talking with King Bob. But I want to read it the same way.
Yeah.
I was trying to talk.
But she, she says.
Oh, she already started.
I have that when they got, when they looked at it on the paperwork. It didn't what the agenda was.
Well, I don't know if I don't know, but this is exceptional. What's that?
Yeah. What is all this?
It is.
You guys ready? Ready to go?
All right. Calling the meeting to order, regular session of Pleasanton City Council on this Thursday evening, December 1st, 2016. Our time is now 6:01. Our invocation this evening is going to be given by the Reverend Mario Agary from the Emanuel Church. Please rise.
Let's pray. Dear God, we come before you, and first of all, we are grateful for your blessings and for everything that was accomplished today through your strength and through your will. We ask at this time, you blessed this gathering, this meeting. We pray and ask blessings upon the council, and we pray for each, uh, their families. And today, we ask also for our city manager and all the staff and city employees. This time, we ask, uh, blessing upon the police department and fire department, Lord, and for all they do, keep them safe. And we ask your guidance upon this meeting, all the items on this agenda, and we just ask that you will be done, and we just grateful today in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Agary. Place the flag, Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Agenda item number three is our roll call, Mrs. Pacifica.
Here.
Mr. Best, here.
Here.
Mr. Wood.
Here.
Let the record reflect that, uh, Mr. Hernandez is out of town on a job, and, uh, Mayor Clint Powell is still, uh, out of state, I believe, in training. He'll be back in January, I understand. Uh, we do have a quorum. Agenda item number four is our consent agenda, number A, or A, approval of minutes of the regular session of November the 17th, 2016. B, approval of the final plat for Pleasanton ISD Transportation Facility subdivision. Mr. Medding.
Yes, sir.
And C, approval of a variance to the 2015 International Code Table 802.1 for eight foot two inches wooden privacy fence at 375 Airport Road, property ID number 182039. Mr. Rainey.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Best.
I move to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items A, B, and C. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote. On favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, motion carried. Mr. McLeaney, you got here yet?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, our agenda item next is, is five ordinances and resolutions. We're going to bypass 5A for right now until Mr. McLeaney is, who is hung up in traffic, I understand, uh, he should be here, and we will come back to him, uh, and 5A when he gets here. Uh, we'll continue on with 5B, reading and adoption of ordinance number 16-1183, enacting the annual American legal publishing supplement, updating the code of ordinances for the city of Pleasanton, Texas, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 16-1183, in ordnance of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, enacting and adopting a supplement to the code of ordinances for the city of Pleasanton, Texas, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Best.
I move to adopt ordinance number 16-1183, enacting the annual American legal publishing supplement, updating the code of ordinances for the city of Pleasanton, Texas, and declaring an emergency.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enact, first of all, to adopt ordinance number 16-1183, enacting the annual American legal publishing supplement, updating the code of ordinances for the city of Pleasanton, Texas, and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? If there's none, we'll call for a vote. On favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, motion carried. We'll move on now to, uh, agenda item number six. Our citizens' comments. Mr. Byrd.
Yes, sir.
Good to see you again.
Mr. Mayor, council.
Mr. Weezer, thank you for your time.
Good to be back in front of y'all again. In case you hadn't forgotten what I'm here about, you have this in your packet, and it's a report, pictorial, a report of the skate jam that we had on 13th of, uh, November. And I'd like to read you just a little, a few items here. The latest skate jam was well attended by skaters, parents, friends, and curious onlookers. There is an interest by beginners who want to learn, so classes will be provided as part of future skate jams. Equipment was donated to provide charges, and that was $400 worth of equipment that was donated, uh, to provide prizes. $200 was collected for the skate park fund. Bob's gonna be, send thank you for that. And, uh, skate park and drink chips were donated, pizza was provided by Cowboy Fellowship. The jam was competitive, fun, exciting, and the skaters enjoyed the challenge of developing new skills. There was a spirit of appreciation for each other and their accomplishments, and the attitudes they displayed were impeccable. They really cheered when someone else succeeded. I personally want to express my appreciation to our friends at the, the press. And, uh, you know, it, Thanksgiving is over, but I try to make that a year-long activity. And I am thankful for a lot of folks. Uh, the encouraging words, the professional articles, and sincere interest have made, uh, my pursuit of a skate park an enjoyable adventure. Mr. Weezer, Mr. Medding, and Mr. Leach have had a calming effect on the Birdman here, because I get excited about what I'm doing. And Mr. Best, thanks for your wise counsel as we move forward with this. When deciding on a budget, look at these pictures and ask yourself, what are they worth? I remain committed to provide all my energies to see this through to completion as an advocate for Vision 2020. Thank you, appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments? If not, we'll move on to agenda item number seven, departmental reports. Mr. Weezer.
Yeah, the postal works director's report will be as submitted, and the, uh, department head report will be done by, uh, Greg Leach, our parks superintendent.
Evening, Mayor Pro Tem, council.
Evening.
Evening.
Aside from the Parks Department, normal maintenance and custodial duties at the River Park Sports Complex and public buildings, uh, we be, repainted, uh, mowed and painted multiple sports fields at the River Park, uh, Sports Complex and the new soccer fields, uh, for football, soccer, and multiple softball games. Uh, we mowed, I'm sorry, moved several irrigation heads at the sports complex to achieve a more effective irrigation coverage and uniformity. We began cleanup efforts on the east side of the Atascosa River, uh, between the river and the railroad tracks for better accessibility and, uh, more usefulness of that area, the park, which in the future can be used for a, uh, walking trails and other amenities. Uh, we installed an LED landscape lighting system here at City Hall, is capable of 36,000 colors, allowing us the customization for themes for holidays and events and regular just, uh, landscape, uh, accent lighting. Uh, and then we also put up Christmas lights at Police Department, City Hall, the Civic Center, and the museum. And that's it, I'll stand for questions. Yes, ma'am.
Um, did, are we doing, we're not doing a Christmas tree this year, right?
The logistics of the Christmas tree that we discussed, uh, proved to be a little bit more complicated.
Okay.
Than we anticipated. The parks are all still there, and we'll be ready for it next year.
Okay.
Uh, we have a, we have a good building.
Okay.
Uh, points from here on.
All right.
Build on each year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Weezer.
Good evening, council, Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening.
I'd like to start off by, uh, updating you on Main Street. Um, I'm sure you heard about, uh, some of the concerns that we've had on the sidewalk construction downtown, uh, but, uh, soon after that, I have met, uh, we met with the consulting engineer, Brian, Brian Cop and D and D. And, uh, you know, some of the, some of these, some of these things you can't see in the design until you start constructing them, so, uh, it's obvious what we need to do. So they'll be addressing the remaining sidewalks, uh, after the holidays, so not to disrupt any of the downtown business. Uh, but, uh, they'll be coming back to that after they're done with the phase, second phase of it. Uh, also on Main Street, uh, a closure is typically taken to council, uh, but in this rare occurrence, uh, I have met with the chief to close Main Street, uh, between Hunt and Johnson Street on December 17th from 11 to 7:00. Uh, this will be for the annual Downtown Merchants Art Walk and Ice Fights events. Uh, we did not see any problems, uh, foresee any problems with the street closure, uh, and, uh, also, uh, there, uh, there were some concerns about the vendors setting up on the sidewalks, uh, because of the new concrete work, but I've met with, uh, also with Brian Cop and the, and, uh, he's advised that it would not be a problem, uh, for, for us setting that. We're okay with that, chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, then our, our next phase of street CIPs, I want to update you on that, uh, projects are scheduled to begin to the, to be the, the bid process by advertising for bids on December 14th and December 21st. Uh, bids are scheduled to be opened on January 4th of 2017, and we will have the bid recommendations for councils on the January 19th meeting. Um, that completes my report. I stand for any questions, then I'd, I'd like to do some recognition, uh, recognition.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Wood.
On that, uh, do you think 7:00 is a good time, or should it be a little bit earlier? Because the parade will be going through there, just so I know exactly what's going on, so I won't run into them.
We'll be going through there?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, I'll, uh, what time is yours starting?
We're going to, uh, what I'll do is I'll leave a little bit later. I'll, I was planning on leaving at 6:30, but I will leave at 7:00, so it'll be from the high school, so they should be able to get out of the way.
Perfect.
By the time I get there. Is that okay?
Yeah. Uh, just, uh, no, we had, we put 7:00 o'clock down. Mm-hmm. But we actually planned to move the vendors out before, so you don't have to.
That sundown. Everyone sundown, okay. Yeah, that'll work perfectly. Thank you.
We, uh, we met with Laura.
Laura.
Laura, and we kind of coordinated it already, so.
Okay. Good deal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Weezer, that concludes your message for the season.
Yes, sir.
We'll move on, we'll move on to 8A for the.
Well, I'd like to, uh, do the recognition.
Yes, special recognition, 8A.
Okay. Uh, now, I'd like to take this time to recognize some of the employees, uh, for the work done on the Crestline Water Project. Uh, this is the first cities' major waterline project that was designed and completed by in-house staff. Uh, the, the project consisted of over 26,000 linear feet of 12-inch and 16,000, I mean, 16-inch PVC pipe. And we started this project at the Hoppen Waterwell on July 1st of 2015, and we finished, uh, at Highway 97, just shy of IH 37 on November the 9th. Uh, I asked David Alisa and Sharon Bueno to calculate how much it would cost, how much it'd cost the city to do this project to include the design, labor, and material. Uh, it totaled to $2.19 million that we, that we spent on this project. We then compared it to the anticipated contract cost, uh, if the contractor was to have done this project, and they were at $3.275 million. So this equated to a total savings of $1.075 million that, that the city saved by doing this project in-house. At this time, I would like to say thank you on behalf of the city of Pleasanton and city council to John Medding, Doritel Reyna, and his crew for their hard work, dedication, passion, and leadership they have demonstrated in achieving this major milestone in our water CIP of the city master plan. So I'd like to call each and every one of them, so that I can give a word, uh, give them their, their, uh.
Sharon.
Oh, you got them up here already. All right. Uh, John Medding. And it reads, uh, from the office of the city manager, recognizing John Medding for your dedication, passion, and leadership to your professional commitment to the city of Pleasanton, so.
All right. Thanks.
Doritel Reyna. Doritel Reyna is our construction foreman, who was the, the main, the main leader on this project. He's a guy that you just give the drawings to him, and, uh, he'll take, take it from there, so. Our heavy equipment operator, he's the main, main guy that does all the, uh, the digging out there. And then I go to the, uh, equipment operators, uh, have Roy Garcia. And we'll go with Walter Carrillo. And then Joe Montoya. Thank you, guys, for the hard work, man. Uh, I pre, we really appreciate y'all.
Can I take a picture?
Yeah.
You guys can get closer than that.
There we go.
Okay, on three, this way, one, two, three. Again, one, two, three. And one more, please. One, two, three. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer, and thank you, gentlemen. Well-earned. Well-earned.
Park is here, Mayor.
Nice one. Okay. Uh, we're going to go back now to, on the agenda number 5A, which is reading and adoption of ordinance number 16-1182 of the city council of the city of Pleasanton, Texas, combination tax and limited pledge revenue certificates of obligation series 2016, levying a tax and providing for the payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent, registrar agreement, approving the official statement, enacting other provisions relating thereto, and declaring an effective date. Mr. McLeaney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
We're glad that you made it here safely.
And I apologize for running a few minutes late, but I'm glad to hear, uh, this last presentation by Mr. Weezer, because, so, yeah, because those are the type of things that have been happening in Pleasanton that help you maintain the bond rating that you have. Think it was a million-two that was saved, or did I go? A million-two on a water and sewer project. Those are the things that reflect when you go out to market on your fund balance, what's going on here, and the improvements that are being made. So I was glad I was able to hear that short presentation. About six weeks ago, you authorized us to move forward with the park project, which is the financing for $3.5 million to do the improvements around River Park. That process allowed us to do a notice of intention resolution to alert your voters that this was a project you all were doing, and we published that two weeks in a row. Mr. Trell, your all's bond council, prepared that. From that point on, we started putting together an offering document and working with the rating agencies to get a bond rating for these bonds and review the city's finances. They review management, they review the actual finances, they review your budget going forward, and they look in the past. Uh, your staff got together, we had conference calls with the rating agencies, came in with a double-A bond rating. The highest rating you can possibly have is a triple-A. Federal government, that's about it. There's a few that are, the city of San Antonio has a triple-A. Then it's double-A plus, double-A, double-A minus, A plus, A, A minus, it keeps going down the scale. Extremely good bond rating. Five years ago, we needed to go out and get bond insurance to get us to this level. We had to buy insurance to get us to the double-A. Your finances and how you all operate and manage gets you to that by itself. And that's why I tie back to the presentation on saving a million-two on an important project going out to, to, uh, the interstate with the water project. Those are the type of things that help keep your double-A bond rating. Put all that information together, and we went out for bid today. This packet is the bidding that we received. The best bid is FTN Financial. 3.08% was the average interest rate. That's a fixed rate for the 20-year term. Northland Securities and Robert W. Baird were the second and third place bidders. These firms bid with a group called a syndicate of other firms, so they pool their resources and spread their risk out, because once they buy these bonds, they buy them at the 3.08%. They have to sell them to their customers. If they can't sell them, they have to keep taking a loss. It's unimportant to us. So they get a group, a syndicate, to do this together. So this 3.08% is the best bid. The numbers, which is the second packet, you'll see there on the par amount, $3,495,000, where you authorized us to go out for an amount not to exceed $3,005,000. The purchasers are paying $120,000 in a premium, you'll see net premium, $122,000. We will deposit $3,005,000 in the construction fund. The balance is going to be cost of issuance and underwriters discount. That's what that firm, FTN, could make if they can sell all those bonds. If they can't, that number keeps getting reduced, but we get our $3.5 million. The interest rate is on the second page. You can see the rate. Right down the middle in the yield. They make different numbers, those rates, which is what the city's going to pay, and the yield is what the investor's going to get. So the rate, when you average all those together, come to 3.08%. You can look at it and say, well, that, there's a lot more numbers that are higher than three. How do you get to the 3.08%? Because of the premium they're paying us, the $122,000 extra. The debt service schedules, if you go to page four and five, this is what, when the budget hits, and what you all are going to be responsible for paying every year, is the annual payment on the far right-hand column. The first year, it's going to be $226,000. After that, it'll roughly be $239,000, $240,000 for the life of the bonds. We've looked at this with your budget, we looked at this with the hotel motel taxes. This can be handled. We worked with Christie, we worked with Mr. Weezer on making sure that, that we're not over, uh, committing yourself, and we're comfortable with these numbers, uh, with, with this being the budget going forward. Uh, the last page, you'll see, um, page six and seven, but six are the statistics. Date, date, you can start paying interest, 12/29, so December 29th, the money will be in your bank. First coupon is August 1st, that's the first time we'll make a payment, August 1st, 2017, and the last payment, the last maturity, is August 1st, 2036. Ten years from now, if interest rates happen to be lower, if you've accumulated more money than you want to have in, in your hotel motel tax, you can start paying these off from the last maturity forward. So, you know, that just keep, keep the good management that you have. If you're in a position that we can get rid of some of these bonds in 10 years, we'll, we'll recommend and just say use some of the cash for that. Um, the second paragraph, true interest cost, that's what we, that's the borrowing cost, and then if you put all cost of issuance into it, similar to what they'll say in a mortgage, the all-in take is 3.29%. So that would be if I came in here and said, your final borrowing cost, taking into account all of the cost of issuance, is 3.29%. I wish we could have sold three weeks ago or four weeks ago, prior to the bond, I mean, prior to the presidential election, because as, as the equities has gone way up, the, the stock market's gone way up, the interest rates have gone down. That being said, two years ago, three years ago, 10 years ago, we would die to borrow at 3.29%. We just have that memory of, of a month ago, when we could borrow maybe at 3%. So great interest rates and the historical scheme, we can afford this, you're set up well, you got a great bond rating, what you all do to manage your staff and what your staff does to manage the personnel out on, uh, the streets are doing great job for the city, and that's reflected in your all's bond rating and in these, uh, bids that we received today. So that's a lot of information. I'm happy to address anything, go over additional. If you're satisfied, then we'll go to the bond ordinance, which, again, Mr. Trell put together, and I'll let him speak to that, uh, but if it's about the bonds and the financing, I'm happy to go over anything you may, uh, have, or any concerns or thoughts, uh, that you'd like to go over.
Any questions for Mr. McLeaney? Thank you, sir.
And again, really, the city's doing, that double-A is not easily obtained, uh, and it's something that's worth continuing to work for.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Mr. McLeaney. Mr. Trell.
Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, um, obviously, Mark went in the market, as he said, and got your bid today from FTN. Um, in order to accept this bid, you're going to adopt the ordinance authorizing the issuance of these certificates of obligation. Um, in that, you'll adopt all terms of sale, and you'll authorize the issuance of the debt. From that point on, of course, I will get all the documents required, that put the signatures, um, and I'll proceed forward with filing with the Texas Attorney General and look forward to a successful closing. In, in regards to the ordinance, um, if you have any questions, we sent a draft ordinance, so the only thing that's changed is we filled in the blanks and we provided for the Mayor Pro Tem's signature, since Mr. Mayor Powell is out. Is there any questions about the ordinance or anything on the legal process related to these certificates?
Any questions for Mr. Trell? Yes, Mr. Wood.
From what I understand, the gross amount will be $3,622,892.60.
The gross proceeds, okay? So the, the par amount will be less. The par amount is actually.
Yeah, what, what will it cost us total, right, as of right now?
Well, the, the amount of bonds you are issuing, I'm going to go, work a bit through this backwards here for you. Uh, let me get to my next page.
Sure, Mark. We'll borrow $3,495,000.
We're borrowing three million, four-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars. You're gonna put three million five into your construction fund, and when it's all said and done, and this is on page, on that handout.
Yes.
About six pages, on page five, you will end up paying back total four million, seven-eighty-eight, seven-twenty-nine. This is on, that's on the bottom right-hand corner of page five.
Oh, oh, I'm on the wrong one.
It's the one that.
Page five, okay.
So that includes your principal repayment and interest.
And interest.
Over time.
Okay. And it is a nineteen-year bond?
It's twenty-thirty-six, there's actually twenty maturities.
Okay.
So.
Oh, yes, seventeen.
Right.
Okay.
And you will, as I mentioned earlier, after ten years, you can pay it off, the last maturity. So if in twenty-twenty-seven, say you have an extra two-hundred-and-thirty thousand in the hot fund, you could pay off the last maturity, two-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Stop the interest on that amount for the next ten years.
You lost one more time.
Um, after ten years, if you accumulated funds, this is being paid, as you know, from the hotel motel taxes.
Yes.
So say you've accumulated more than your reserves require. The city could come in and say, we wanna pay off that loan. We'll just get, get rid of this loan. They can start paying down, just like you would maybe a car loan, or paying early on a mortgage. So you have the ability to do that, and when you pay down, the interest associated with the part that you pay down goes away. So it would decrease all the other payments.
Right.
If you pay, so.
I understand what you said. Okay.
So we're trying, we try to give you, and this is all in this ordinance, give you as a council and you as your staff, all the options to go with different directions, because you all may accumulate more money, maybe interest rates come down, and we can refinance it at lower rates. So we try to give you all the options for future decisions.
But can we make extra payments before ten, not until ten years? Okay.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and then, if you wanna look, think about it in the sense of a mortgage, so if you've got a two-hundred-thousand-dollar mortgage, your cost of lending might be three-hundred thousand.
Yes.
But your mortgage is for two-hundred thousand, that's why this ordinance, this ordinance is for the par amount, which is three million, four-ninety-five.
Okay. I, I understand what you're talking about now.
Mr. McClain. Just a hypothetical question. The city's bond rating was not what it is at this time. Say it was, what, what do we, single A, goes down to single A, and then from where? Single A goes where?
If, if we got into fiscal trouble?
Yes.
Then it would go down to triple B.
Okay. Now, the lower that is, the lower the rating is, the higher the interest rate, is that correct?
Correct. It's a risk, you're, you're hitting the L in the head.
Right.
It's a judgment, those ratings is a judgment of risk.
Right.
The lower, the higher the risk, the lower the rating means the higher risk, and the investors are gonna demand the higher interest rate.
Exactly.
And so that's why getting to that double-A was so important when you did it a few years ago, and maintaining it going forward, even if you're not borrowing, is just a feather in your own cap. It really says how you are managing is a third-party independent saying that you all, and I say you all, that means you all, your staff, and, and the entire city is operating well.
Okay. Well, we're gonna work towards that triple-A. Yes, Mr. Wood.
Will this be locked in on the interest rate?
Yes, sir. If the rates continue to go up in the market, these don't change.
No, but I'm talking about if our, if we got in a bind, and the rating went down, they're not gonna change.
These don't change.
Locked. Okay.
These are locked. It is fixed from the time you adopt the ordinance.
Uh, okay.
There are bonds out there, none of the, the city has, that's called variable and can change, and we would not.
No.
We wouldn't allow that. We wouldn't recommend that. Mr. Trell wouldn't, wouldn't want you all to have that either on the legal side.
You can get in trouble with them, I can tell you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. McClain or Mr. Trell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Weezer?
Yes, sir.
Uh, have you got anything that you would like to add?
No, but I stand for any questions, I know, uh, if you have any questions.
I talked to you earlier today, and I, I wanna bring it out in public, that, uh, most of the land that is required has been talked to, the people have been talked to, correct?
Yes, sir. We've approached them in one way or the other.
And that was real important to me on this bond, was that we had already contacted people to let them know, and, uh, we're working on that. I think this is a very good project.
Yes, sir.
And I have a, the school will probably work with us, because they're moving on up on the other side of town.
Mm-hmm.
So we have, at this moment, we have a lot of leeway on what we can do.
Yes, sir, we have plenty of options.
Okay. And, uh, I wanna thank Mr. Byrd for getting this started. I've had, uh, a lot of comments that they really enjoy, and it gives our young citizens something to do besides being destructive. So I think this is a very, and I've talked to people about the walking park in the Pecan Valley, and they're excited, 'cause they're, you know, it's gonna be a lighted walking park, and.
A walking area.
So, and, uh, cowboy fellowship came with the sprinklers, and we're gonna put everything together where they can have soccer and everything, and I think this is a great idea.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Weezer? Thank you, Mr. Weezer. I'd like to go on now and read ordinance number sixteen dash eleven-eighty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, awarding the sale and authorizing the issuance of City of Pleasanton, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series two thousand sixteen, levying a tax and providing for the payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, enacting other provisions relating thereto, and declaring an effective date.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Best.
I move to adopt ordinance number sixteen dash one-one-eight-two of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, awarding the sale and authorizing the issuance of City of Pleasanton, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series two thousand sixteen, levying a tax and providing for the payment thereof, authori, authorizing the, uh, execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, enacting other provisions related thereto, and declaring an effective date.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number sixteen dash eleven-eighty-two. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pleasanton, Texas, awarding the sale and authorizing the issuance of City of Pleasanton, Texas Combination Tax and Limited Pledge Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series two thousand sixteen, levying a tax and providing for the payment thereof, authorizing the execution and delivery of a paying agent registrar agreement, approving the official statement, enacting other provisions relating thereto, and declaring an effective date. Do we have any discussion? There's no discussion, we'll move to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right, moving on down to agenda item number nine, uh, mayor's message and announcements. Uh, Mayor Powell, uh, did not have anything that he would like, uh, to have said at this meeting. Uh, however, uh, I would like to, uh, comment. Uh, one of our council members is having a birthday tomorrow. I understand, I hope this is right. This is what I was told. Mrs. Pacifica?
Yes.
Would like to say happy birthday, and, and may you have many more.
Thank you very much.
And that's all the announcement that I have. Agenda item number ten. Discussion and action to accept Langford Community Management Services proposal to provide CDBG grant administration services. Mr. Meddy.
Yes, sir. Um, we, we, um, went out for proposals on, for RFP on, on grant administration. And the only taker that sent us a proposal was Langford, um, Community Management Services. And we've worked with them before, and with that being said, I, my recommendation is that, that we choose Langford Community Management Services to provide grant administration services for a fee of thirty thousand dollars.
All right. Uh, any questions for Mr. Meddy? If not. On page eighty-two.
Okay, just give me a second. Eighty-four.
I didn't update, it could be eighty-four. I found it on eighty-two. There.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Mr. Best.
I move to direct city staff to accept Langford Community Management Services proposal to provide CDBG grant administration services for a fee of thirty thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to direct city staff to accept Langford Community Management Services proposal to provide CDBG grant administration services for a fee of thirty thousand dollars. Any discussion? If none, we'll move to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Agenda item number eleven, discussion and action to cancel the regular session of December the fifth, two thousand and, uh, December the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. Mr. Best.
Uh, yes, during the, uh, last council meeting, I was kinda pushing to make sure that we had all these meetings available. I think we did a lot of the heavy lifting today. Uh, it's pretty evident that a lot of people, uh, the council members included, may or may not be here during that time period. So, uh, it is, uh, from my opinion now, it would make, uh, it would just be very prudent to go ahead and cancel that meeting. It's not relevant at this point in time.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, Mr. Wood.
I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the regular session of December the fifteenth, two thousand sixteen.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cancel the regular session of December the fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Any discussion? If not, we'll move to vote. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Agenda item number twelve, review of the bills. Mrs. Pacifica, anything?
No.
Mr. Best.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Flores.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wood. We'll move on. Number thirteen for adjournment.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Best.
I move to adj.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned. Our time is now six forty-two PM.
Yes, I know. But not just.